Hello, welcome to the Board of Trustees Stevens Memorial Library Meeting. I will call, well, first I'll do the roll call. For who's present, myself is Anne Kavanaugh. Kathleen Keenan.
Here.
Cindy Maza.
You can see her.
Cindy?
Cindy's muted.
Okay. All right, she raised her hand. Dee, Casey?
Present and accounted for.
All right. Mary Desha.
Here.
Bill Duffy. Bill, are you with us? I think he is, I see his phone there. Eva Hummery.
Here.
Stan Limper.
Yes?
Mark Rogers.
Here.
And Earl Svensson. What happened to Earl?
We lost him.
Oh, okay, well.
He'll be back.
He'll be back. Okay, so we'll call to order at 5:01. Cindy, was there any public comment by email?
I can't hear you Cindy.
Uh-oh.
So can't hear you.
You could just signal, was there any? Okay, there was not any public comment by email. Okay then. Reports, chairperson, that would be me, I really don't have much to report this month. So. I will turn it right over to Kathleen, the director.
And I should now be unmuted too. Excuse the scratching voice, I'm drinking some tea. Hopefully it's gonna work. We shortened the agenda for today, we were expecting to have a shorter meeting because there were meetings backed up right behind us. So. It could be a quick meeting if we stick to really, basically to the agenda. There are a few things to report on the building. Very quickly, we have some weatherization, some new insulation that's being added around roof areas that'll be here tomorrow. We have someone to refinish the historic doors. We're still working on getting quote, to do the engineering for the historic stairs. The inside lower lobby has now been painted along with the vestibule. Since we've been closed, we've been able to do some other things. We've not made any progress on the teen room since we last met. Financially, the latest date was to commit or to submit the capital improvement requests. We have just refreshed the one that we've had standing for two years to do some kind of parking study to see if we can improve parking. But the request is to do the study in FY '22 and think that the construction might be in FY '23. We're working with the school system to try and find a way to support the elementary schools who are not able to lend books to the children. We've had a break because some of the planners were not able to attend meetings, we're hoping to start that again next week. Our curbside continues to be popular, we're getting a few more people in for appointments. It is still manageable, which is good news because staffing changes on a regular basis. We will be continuing our weekend hours through November and December, which is that we will be in the building for half a day on Saturday and doing curbside. This is a function of staffing. We have people who, for different reasons, have to be staying at home, and so we don't have a full complement in the building every day. Our errors report, which is the annual statistics, was filed on time. And a totally thank you to Cindy for getting that work done. And the state finance report, which we file each year as well, went in on time. The good news is based on our, looking at the criteria, the town will be, the library will be certified this year again by the Board of Library Commissioners. We will not be able to apply for a waiver. Always really good news for us. And the other one is that the Friends of the Library had a very successful book sale under the tent at the Stevens Estate. Many of the Friends' workers actually really liked it, it was a lot more spacious and being crowded in the meeting room. And they had a number of buyers who were very happy with it. One of our discussions last week was, did I think they could have a book sale here in May? And I told them, I thought they should make other plans because we could always cancel the other plans if something changes. So we actually have already scheduled the next book sale to be under the tent in May. And not planning that the building's gonna be available for those different kinds of activities until well after the spring, based on just what we're seeing right now. The last thing which we can actually bring up when it's the treasurer, is that it's time to get a little bit more money put into the endowment checking account. But I'll leave that until we have Earl on doing his report. And that's it for me.
You're on. You're on mute Anne.
Can you folks hear me now?
Oops, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I figured it out.
Earl, are you back?
I am, I am back, but my internet connection seems to be iffy, but I'll continue, I turned my camera off, so I think that's part of it.
Yeah, we can hear you very well, so do you want to do your treasurer report?
I can, I don't have my copy in front of me, but the treasurer's report that was sent out should have all the balances of the accounts. I think Mark's gonna talk a little later about the transfer of funds from Eaton Vance to Fidelity only. So you can see there, I think the amount. Mark, I think you told me it was roughly 500K that we moved. Yeah. In addition, the check report has some of the later checks that have been written or cashed. As Kathleen mentioned, the balance in the checking account is, is getting, you know, to the point where we need to discuss taking some funds out of the endowment and transfer it into the checking account. But other than that, you know, as of the time I prepared the report, our endowment fund, you know, I think we've talked about this before, the endowment fund took a dip in the April timeframe when the COVID scare started. It's pretty much come back, I have not looked at it in the last two or three days. I know Mark said the market was down earlier this week, or was it, yeah, I think it was earlier this week.
It was yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
And Mark, I'll let you talk about the rebalancing and things like that. So unless somebody has any questions, I want to give Mark some time to talk about what he's trying to do.
And the one thing I will say is that we, the town was going to reimburse us for the protective screens that we put on the desk, and we did receive the checks. So that reimbursement has been deposited now back in the checking account.
Yeah, that's correct, I saw that. Kathleen, you're correct.
Very helpful that the trustees did that, so once again, I say thank you for helping us deal with a timing issue.
Earl, did we already make a withdrawal from our account and put into the checking account this fiscal year?
I think we've lost Earl, but as far as I can remember, we did not do anything.
What we did do though was transfer funds into the liquid account, and so the funds are sitting there in Fidelity waiting to be transferred.
Yes, yes, yes.
Do we have a link now, direct link, or do we have to do the check thing? From Fidelity? And forget if we set that up or not, or if we could.
I don't think we have set that up, I think we would need to.
It might have been complicated, and we thought it would be just to write a check, so. Okay, should, wait, do you, Mark, do you want to talk about that moving money since Earl is gone for now?
Per the, per the director of the Bolt Trustees, we liquidated the Eaton Vance funds. And they came in at $591,970 after fees and closing fees were, or trade fees and closing fees were charged. And and so the one thing that I wanted to do was just to make sure that we understood some of the things that we had voted on last time, which was to transfer funds in a fund category like-for-like. So that the intent of the investments would be continued when we move the funds into the Fidelity account. So in order to do that, we needed to classify all the funds, which we've done, as, as, you know, categories, whether they're US bond funds, or government bond funds, or industrial bond funds, et cetera, or international funds or stock funds. So, so I have that all done and balanced out, and when I, when I was doing the analysis, I discovered that the, the balance between stock and stocks and bonds in the Eaton Vance funds were essentially 50/50, stocks and 50% stocks, 50% bonds. But in the Fidelity account, it was closer to 60/40 stocks to bonds, it was about 50, 58 to 42. And so there's enough blurriness in the mapping of the funds because they were so different. Like, for example, we have international bond funds in the Eaton Vance funds, we do not have international bond funds in the Fidelity funds. So there's no direct map for that. So I, for instance, I mapped that to the US industrial bond funds. So in any event, what I'd like to suggest that we do is to rebalance those monies to, to match the balance that we had in the Fidelity account, which is 60% stocks and 40% bonds. And as, as Stan is quick to mention, this is a forever fund investment. We have no, the fund has no children to put through college, or, or any reason to be retirement risk averse, so to speak. And, and we have another, you know, our timing was sort of lucky in the fact, in the fact that the money is still sitting in the demand account and has not been put back in the market. So we didn't experience the precipitous drop over the last few days. So anyway, so that's where we stand at this point, so I guess if, if the, if the committee is amenable to this, I'd like to put a motion on the table, and we can then discuss it, which is to rebalance the funds from the Eaton Vance account to match the percentage of stocks and percentage of bonds that we had in the Fidelity account, as a way of keeping them consistent.
I'll, I'll second that if that's your motion.
Yes, that's my motion. Because I felt, I felt like I shouldn't invest the funds without this, because it was, it would have meant, I think, going backwards to where we wanted to go for one, and two, I didn't feel like I had the authority to, to just willy-nilly change the direction of the.
And, and, and a few years ago, we had that, when we were thinking about like our, sort of our, our investment prospectus almost, we had talked about, you know, what did we want the stock versus bond division to be? And we had talked about various alternatives from 60 to 60% stocks to 80% stocks. And we, at that time, agreed that 60/40 was a split we all, at that point, felt comfortable with. So I think sort of continuing in that direction is probably the right thing to do, so. And it gives you, now that you have all this liquidity, you can pretty much easily do that. Now my, I guess a question I have is, are the funds that are in our current Fidelity account, are all of those, or most of those ones that Bill Hanson had selected? Question?
Yes, they are, they have not changed. And, and by the way, because of the market fluctuations and bonds, bonds and stocks doing better or worse at different areas, the, the balance of them has changed over time, and we're now back much closer than we were earlier in the year, where bonds had done much better than stocks. And therefore, we had sort of a higher percentage in bonds than we had in stocks, et cetera. But now it's, it's, the stocks have caught up and surpassed the bonds, and so we're now back very close to a 60/40 balance.
So Mark, this is Earl. We had talked a little, we might want to at least briefly discuss the timing of trying to get this balance done. So I think Stan, you would, you would raise.
And so there are.
You know, the point that the, the market could be pretty volatile, you know, through the election period. And so, you know, asking Mark to balance these distributions, we might want to understand that, or give him some time to meet his target, probably is the way to say it. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason why, you know, waiting a week or two, just to sort of let every, you know, let the national situation sort of settle out one way or the other.
The same thing.
Is, is a bad thing, I, I think that makes sense to me, I'm, I'm completely fine with that. I don't. Without the election, I think, you know, people would say, if you're gonna rebalance a, you know, accounts of this magnitude, that you should probably do it over some period of time anyway.
True.
I'm just, I'm just curious, Mark, what is the value of our Fidelity account at this point, roughly?
Yeah, roughly.
As of last Friday, that's, it's on the treasurer's report, I just don't, you know, I haven't updated.
Two, about 278, or it was, last Friday.
So. Yeah, so on the 30th of, I, I only have the data from the 30th, so it's, it was about 272, so it's gone up a little bit from then.
So we, we've shown some amount of appreciation this year in our overall endowment, is that true?
That's correct.
Yeah. The other question I had, Mark, is you mentioned that Eaton Vance had international bond fund, and that the Fidelity funds that we own, there is no, there is no Fidelity bond fund, Fidelity only, international bond fund. And I know you've talked a little bit about, Stan asked the question, are these the funds that we initiated a while back? Is there a reason you wouldn't pick an international bond fund from Fidelity, or is that your plan?
No, the plan is not to do that, the plan was to stick with the funds that we've, we've already got. We have an international stock fund, but we don't have an international bond fund.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're trying to keep our balances, you know, if we're trying to keep the fund somewhat the same, I, I don't, I would object to.
I don't think.
Opening a new fund.
Given the performance of the Eaton Vance funds, I can tell you, and those were the worst performing funds.
Yeah.
The international ones in general, but the bond funds in particular. So I'm not sure we want to duplicate that.
Well, I guess maybe I'm, all I'm saying is, I don't know that we should tie your hands in the moving, you know, and trying to balance this to be like it was, so to speak, to not possibly initiating or putting it in a, a new Fidelity fund.
Well, if, if I were to do that, I would be, what I would do is I would perform an analysis of the fund in question and bring it to this group for review.
Yeah.
And, and there's nothing that says, you know, look, this is, this is ours to trade, so to speak, so we can, from time to time, look at opportunities to move out of our existing portfolio model and change it.
I'm just trying to make your job easier.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what I've done is built a model, we have to investigate a little technically, you have to invest by, by the number of shares. So I just built a model to calculate the number of shares based on the new amount of purchase. But the new amount of purchase is based on the balance that we need to derive. So with this guidance, I can, I can balance the funds in a way that would then support the overall bond-stock ratio that we have, and then execute buys into those existing funds at the proportion we're looking for.
As, as you start to reinvest the Eaton Vance monies into some Fidelity funds, or through Fidelity, in my mind, it once again raises the question about us becoming a 501(c)(3) and moving those investments into our own accounts with our own EIN. So I think we ought to start, we might want to start having that discussion again as you start this process.
Sure, I, I do want to just say, we, we actually do have a motion on the table about the balance that we probably should get.
Yes, we should probably vote that.
Going straight too far.
So I can repeat what I have, you tell me how I do, Mark.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna rebalance the funds from the Eaton Vance accounts to match the Fidelity percentage, 60% stocks and 40% bonds.
Correct.
Any more?
No nuance, no more nuances.
No more nuances, okay. And Mark, you made the emotion, made the motion, and Stan, you seconded it, I believe?
Okay. Okay, so we have to do a roll call, all in favor, so I am in favor. Anne, that is, Mary?
Yes.
Bill, are you here?
I am, and I am in favor. Yeah.
That's okay, I don't know if Bill's here or not, but. Stan?
Yes.
Eva?
Yes.
And that's, oh, and Mark?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
All right, thank you all for that, I appreciate it, that, that'll give me the, the structure to modify the model to, to make the correct buys. And I, I will, I will probably buy some of these things over time, over the next couple of weeks. And I'll probably, unless there's any objections, I'll probably start with buying the bond funds, and then go with the stock funds toward the end of the two-week period.
So is there anything that we want to talk about pertaining to the timing? That was the only thing, someone had, had said, you know, the timing to make this happen, we want to wait a few weeks before rebalancing after the election. Is there any more that we want to discuss around that, or are you just gonna do it kind of over the next month thereabouts, Mark?
No, I think the guy, you know, the discussion was leaning towards, you know, doing it over time, and taking a patient approach at it, which I'm happy.
That's kind of.
That's fine.
That's kind of the, like, investment committee discretion, correct? Like, we all, I mean, it's up to you to really kind of decide exactly what to invest in, as long as we know that it's like similar and the balancing will be done. I mean, is that, is that what everyone thinks, that he has, you have that authority, Mark, to make some of those decisions? Like exactly what to buy?
I'm nodding my head.
And he is our investment advisor as well.
Right.
As well, yeah.
So, you know, I certainly have an obligation to directionally execute the desire of the group. So I just wanted to make sure that it's clear, and I think I've got clarity on it now. Are there any other questions about this that I can answer?
No, I'm just want to say that I think it's great that we're doing it, and that the timing seems like it was great, so, thank you.
I did get feedback from our advisor at Eaton Vance that it was the worst fund, worst performing fund in their portfolio.
Oh, lovely.
Oh, that's a great.
Nice to hear, however.
Thanks for sharing that.
We got out of it when we did, so.
Good, thank you for doing that.
And we should say that we didn't lose money in it, we just didn't gain as much as the rest of the market, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, by the way, Eaton Vance was acquired by a, I, I don't know, I don't know the name of the bank, they were acquired by a financial, bigger financial firm who's looking to get back into.
I saw that email.
Yeah. They, Mark, they probably, Eaton Vance probably won't ask us for a quote for any of their literature. I'm guessing.
Okay. Eva, do you have anything for the building committee?
No, Kathleen has given you the updates of the things that we've been working on, but she did say that the teen room, we haven't made too much progress, except that we are waiting for some carpet samples to come in, and hopefully we'll be moving that forward. So things are happening for the building committee, which is a good thing.
All right, that's exciting. What, did I miss any other committees? I think that's all. Old business, the printer contract, the copier, Kathleen?
Yep. I did contact the, the representative that we work with for Miko. She did not send us a one-year quote, she sent us a two-year quote. I did send a copy of the new quote over to Anne and to Earl to take a look at. Basically, her recommendation was to go with the two-year one, and the reason for that was that we would then have our two copier contracts in sync again. Right now, they're out of sync, we have one copier contract on the machine the staff uses, and the one on the patron one, that got out of step. We would keep the same machine that we have right now, which is good for us, because that means the two machines are the same make and model. So all of our supplies, like toner, are still usable in both machines. And she came back with a slightly lower price, she said that our monthly cost would be about 20% less than what the new contract was offering. So my recommendation is to go with the two-year contract, and in the meantime, we see what else we want to do for functionality. Earlier, they asked, what did you think, Earl?
I, I saw your email, I apologize for not getting back to you, I was, I was on the road, but I, I agree. You know, it, we had talked about taking some time to do some research on, on some different ways of satisfying the customer, the, the patrons' need to make copies, et cetera, and think how things were changing. But I agree, given, you know, the lower price, the fact that it's the same machine makes it easier, I think, on the staff, if they have to quote fix it. So I, I would recommend we go ahead.
Okay. If that's the case, then I could either have Earl sign it online, or I can have Anne coming and do it physically, whichever you prefer. How are you set for machines where you are, Earl? I don't want to make you do stuff on the telephone.
Well, I, I only have access to a laptop, I don't have a printer, so I would.
And do it.
Fan can do it, that would be fine.
Yeah.
I, I don't think I'm gonna be back until mid-November, so.
Oh.
I don't know if you have a due date yet for for the contract, but Anne.
Yes, I can get in there, let me know, Kathleen, and I'll.
We'll set up a time, yeah, and basically, they're, they're waiting for us to sign it because the contract ended in July, so.
Do you have it, do you have it now?
I have it electronically, so we can get that organized.
Do you want me to come in tomorrow? Oh, I can talk to you about it.
We'll do that later.
Okay. All right. So we already talked about the investment stuff.
Yep.
And anything else before we talk about meeting dates?
Just two other things that we can report, which is that I believe the check for the wreath has been delivered. So we're all set with our holiday wreath, and hopefully we'll have a really nice location. And I have reached out to attorney Terranova to find out about the Matasso book donation, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet, so.
Oh, great.
Those were the other two old business things that we were just, you know, looking for updates on them, so. One is done, and one is gonna go to next time.
Okay. Wow, we were fast, that's only half an hour. Anything, anybody else has? How were they, how were the appointments? Are they? Are they picking up, do you have more of them, or are they kind of leveling off, or even less with like school starting? Are they picking up? Do you have more of them, or are they kind of leveling off, or even less with like school starting?
I think that they've picked up a little bit, many of them are repeat visitors, once somebody's found out they can come to get their own books. We're, we're seeing the same people back again, which is fine with us.
And curbside, is that still busy?
Yes, I think the curbside is, is really very popular. We're, we're seeing a number of bags leave every day, and, and I have to say that overall, the patrons have been really lovely and nice to the people who are running things out to the curbside. And very appreciative of what's going on, so it's good news on that front.
Great. Okay, do we want to talk about the meeting dates? Did it, did anyone get, oh, did you send that to everybody?
I did.
I, I just, before we start the discussion, Kathleen, I, I had a couple of questions, I didn't, maybe I didn't quite understand the the calendar annotations, because there were, are there going, the, the narrative, the text said no meetings in December, but there were two dates that had boxes around them in December, and I didn't, I guess I didn't understand that, and then in January, the, there was a, the fifth was boxed, and I didn't understand that. You know, there were more than one date boxed in the, in a month, and I didn't quite understand all of that, so maybe you could help us with that.
Sure, um, the reason that I did the two dates in December is to talk about what, well, the first thing is that we do have a confirmed broadcast date from the cable station to do the annual meeting and the monthly meeting on November seventeenth, is that right, November seventeenth? I thought the week earlier would be preferable to the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So, um, and if that works for everybody's schedule, and you can let me know if, when you're not going to be able to make it, we should have quorum to do the annual meeting, and then immediately following that, the monthly, the November month meeting for November seventeenth. Often, we have not had a meeting in December unless we have pressing business, and so I put in the two dates for December that if you think we need to plan to have a meeting in December, our normal meeting date would be on December twenty-second, and that might not be preference, so it would be to try and see if we could get the week earlier. So at, at the moment, I don't have a recommendation either way that we need a meeting in December. Things could change, so we, you know, because it, right now it's very difficult to get a confirmed broadcast date with the cable station, maybe we should reserve a date in December, and then if we don't need it, we can give the date back to the cable station.
I, I would think that the fifteenth would be better than the twenty-second, and it is four weeks after the seventeenth. Maybe reserve that.
Yeah, well, and, and that's part of this, is I didn't try to reserve these yet. So it could be that he'll come back and say that's not available. The, the thing that does help us is that our meeting usually starts at five, and many of their others start at six thirty or seven.
In January, there were two dates there.
Right, and for January, what happens typically is that the budget request for the next fiscal year will be required to be presented back to the Board of Selectmen the second week in January. And so normally what we do, we'll get budget instructions, and Dee might know if we've got actually a calendar for this yet. We normally get budget instructions the week of Thanksgiving, so we can all go home and think about working on budgets for Thanksgiving through Christmas. What we've done in the past few years is that the Board of Trustees have met the first week in January to review the budget proposal. So you've already had a chance to see it and comment on it before it gets presented to the Selectmen the second week in January. So that's why the January fifth is to, and, and my guesstimate was that the that the standard process each year is that it goes to the Board of Selectmen the second week in January, so I just looked and said, because Tuesday night seems to have been a better night for most of you to meet, then I picked that Tuesday night.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, that, that, that makes sense to me, so. So, yeah, no, I, all these dates, as far as trying to make reservations with cable access, seems like a smart idea, so I, I would certainly encourage you to go ahead and, and use this calendar and make these reservations if you can with it.
I'm sorry, sorry. Interrupt, would you like us to respond to you with our availability on these dates that you're talking about, like November seventeenth, December fifteenth, January fifth?
Yes, because that would be the one thing, is that if we're, if we're sure we will not have quorum, we wouldn't want to reserve that date.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So I can send this out as another message with each of the dates, actually listed in a chart. It might be a little bit easier to read them than here on the calendar. I'm a visual person, so seeing them on the calendar made it easier for me to make sure I had actually picked the fourth week of the month and things like that, because
Sure.
Once where we have a fifth day, and that has always messed up our schedules when we
Yeah.
Not counted Tuesdays.
You might, could you do it as a shared Google Sheet, so we could just all fill it in?
We can try that.
I mean, just, that's.
Kathleen, you had two dates in May, is, is one of those town meeting, or is that?
Right.
And, and what we've done in the past, and many years we've not recently years needed it, is that then the trustees would normally have a meeting in the afternoon, right before town meeting.
Right.
And, and you would, uh, in the past, we would reserve actually a classroom at the high school and have the meeting in case there was anything that needed to be discussed before town meeting took place. So we had traditionally just set aside a date for there. This year, who knows whether we'll have anything that you want to look at right before town meeting. We usually waited until really the last minute, because there were years when, for instance, the finance committee had not going into town meeting, had not yet voted on, were they supporting the operational budget? So you wouldn't know whether or not you wanted to be prepared to stand up at town meeting.
Thank you.
It's been very routine the last several years, it's been really nice. This, this coming year might be a bit different.
True, we'll have to see with the budget stuff and all that, yikes. Okay, is there anything else anybody has?
Can I just pipe in?
Oh, yep.
So the nature of COVID is such that, you know, we support the community best sort of by staying apart, you know, and we've seen that, you know, just with our board meetings and we would have, if we were all together, I think, you know, we would be able to sort of commiserate and, you know, encourage one another. But we, I think we as a board should acknowledge some of the losses, which our friends and fellow board members have faced this year. Anne, I know you recently lost your mom, Margaret Holtmeyer. From the obituary, we learned she was an avid gardener, a vibrant member of the community, and dedicated to her family. Stan, I know you lost your mother-in-law, Kay DeBurro of Plum Island.
Right.
She was born in Lawrence, here at the community of Haverhill for many years as a pharmacist. And I know both of these women will be greatly missed. Earl, you joined the board when I did, and you now have two grandchildren to, to celebrate, and Olivia. It's, it's the little ones who keep us going and remind us of the wonder in the world. We, I'm hopeful for all of you that these memories and joys will sustain you and guide you in the days ahead. And that at some point when COVID is well in our rearview mirror, that, you know, we can all celebrate and commiserate together as we should, rather than being sort of siloed in separate pictures. But we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mary, that, that was really nice. Earl, I did want to ask you, and first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for the beautiful dish garden and all the well, all the sympathy wishes and all, it was they, uh, we were able to give her a bit of a good send-off, and thank you for those of you who came to the funeral and everything, so I appreciate it. And the family does. But, Earl, I wanted to hear, so you have a granddaughter in Ohio?
That, that is correct, I'm sitting, by the way, I'm, I, I know I turned my camera off because I kept dropping, but I'm, I turned the nursery into my office for today. I don't know if you noticed, I'll, I'll try to put the camera on again, it saw, saw the book, bookshelves in the background. But no, we, um, thanks, Mary, thanks for your comment, we, we left, I guess it's a week and a half ago. We left, we were originally coming to Cincinnati, but we, and then going to Birmingham, but we switched gears and we went to Birmingham for a week where my grandson Jack is, and now we're in Cincinnati. It's actually Hyde Park is the section of Cincinnati, if anybody's familiar with Cincinnati. We're in Hyde Park with my daughter Dana and her, and her husband Brandon, and our new grand, grandchild, Olivia Marie.
That's awesome.
Yes. That's great.
And it's, they're so different, it's unbelievable, you know, Jack is a big, he's a big kid, this one's a peanut.
Your other grand, your other grandchild for your other daughter?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
So you have grandchildren now?
Yeah, so Jack is in, Jack is in Birmingham, that's Erica's, Erica and Colin, Erica's my daughter. That's Erica's son, and we're here now trying to help out the, she's only two weeks old here, so.
Are your daughters identical?
No, no.
Yes, 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 but no, right?
No, no, no.
They're triplets with his son.
That's, yeah, well, you've heard this story, right, Erica's the Scandinavian. Dana is the Italian, and her daughter got a full head of hair, black hair. And my son unfortunately looks like me, so.
Are you, are you Scandinavian, are you, would you consider yourself Scandinavian, Earl?
Well, I'm the Scandinavian half, yes.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, congratulations.
Life, life goes on.
Yes.
It's always nice to have the really good news.
Yeah.
It is. That's fun that they, the cousins will, like, near each other's age, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Anne, I will bring back, so the last question that we did answer was how much money to have transferred into the endowment checking account.
Right, do we want to do the usual?
In the past, we've done either five thousand or ten thousand, at this time, I would say five thousand sounds fine to me. I don't have any specific large expenses that are planned. So I, I will make the request for five thousand, and you can discuss it and, and vote on it.
Does anyone want to discuss it?
I, I would, I would move that we take five thousand dollars from our endowment account and put it in the checking account for the use by the director.
Second.
All in favor? Oh.
Yes.
Eva?
Yes.
Phil Duffy, if he's here, I don't think he's here now. Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Earl? Did I already do Earl?
No, he's muted now, Earl, you're muted, you're on mute.
Didn't he, all right, I think he made the motion, so I'm sure he's in favor. Okay, so that passes.
Yeah, I'm unmuted now, I, I vote yes.
We figured, okay, then I mean officially, Earl votes yes.
And, and maybe, uh, Mark, you and I can talk about where the five K will come from. Now that you have all this cash, all right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just sitting in the demand account, so it's an easy transfer.
And what we've done, what we've done in the past is that you have a check made out to the Board of Trustees Endowment Checking Account. And it's mailed to me.
Not to you, right?
The name on the check is the Library Board of, well, Stevens Memorial Library Board of Trustees Endowment Checking Account. So it's very specific where it's going. And it's been mailed here to the library, and we take it down and deposit it.
I can do that, or?
No, I do it.
Mark does that.
I can do it.
No, I mean deposit it.
They have let us deposit things into your account.
Okay. If you need me, I can do it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else? Nope, okay, then, can I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Okay, I'm in favor, Anne. Mary?
Yes.
Eva?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Okay, so we adjourn at five forty-seven.